They bought a big number of Safeway stores and a large number.
Oh, yeah, I heard that.
Large number.
No, Alphacent just.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I know, that was so cool.
Okay. But Higgins bought some of the.
We're just gonna set this here, Tremaine's still there.
They didn't buy them all.
I thought they were gonna come.
Good evening, like to welcome everybody to our CEDOLI Council, please rise for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which spans one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You've got enough money. Okay, as before, the council knows the situation on the consent calendar, if there's something you'd like to discuss further, let me know and we'll pull it out, if not, entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar from A through F.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilmember Galbraith, a second by Councilmember Kinzer, to approve the consent calendar, A through F. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Passes. Okay, we are at Richard, Skagit watershed council. Come on up.
He's up.
Wow, very impressive, wow of efficiency there.
Yeah, we don't waste any time.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the council, my name is Richard Brocksmith, I am the executive director at the Skagit watershed council. Think I was here, maybe it been April or so last year, and just wanted to find us time then to come and let you know a little bit about the watershed council, our mission for salmon recovery, and also ask if you were interested in joining the organization. So, I wanted to come back and give you just a very brief update, a few points, maybe, and leave it at that. So, if it's okay with you, just note a few things, kind of updates since we were here last, in that I think when we were here, we had about 22 or 23 organizations, and since then, we've gained another 10 or 12, we're up to 33 members, and that includes groups like the city of Mount Vernon, governments like the city of Mount Vernon, the town of Hamilton, the town of La Conner, kind of the non-expected type groups, like the Port of Skagit has joined our organization, and then also sort of more traditional, we've expanded the number of tribes that we work with, including the Upper Skagit Indian Tribe, it's a neighbor to the city here. So, the organization's doing very well fundamentally, including completely revamping our bylaws and financial procedures, and just bringing everything up to the state of the art. So, I feel very good about our organization. As far as what we've been doing content-wise, we've gone through another round of project review and vetting, and have supported a series of projects, are gonna do an awful lot to move the needle towards sustainable salmon populations, allocated, I think it was about four or five million dollars last year, which supported projects that are gonna be, bring about 20 million dollars into the local economy, we're really excited about that. A lot of jobs come from those projects, and they're good for the environment and for people who live in those areas, so we're trying to be good neighbors. So, projects, we're doing a lot of great things on the ground, and then as far as strategic planning goes, we've been working on trying to figure out exactly where the Chinook are that we're most focused on, but very importantly, we've also shifted our attention, not away from Chinook, but we've added Steelhead Trout, Steelhead Recovery Planning as well. So, there's an awful lot of great things going on for fish and for the local economy through our program. So, just wanted to leave you with those, and see if you had any questions of me or some of my organizations or part of the watershed council.
I was in Anacortes yesterday and started getting grilled, and you're into fish restoration and things, and I was asked, what are the goals, when are you gonna be done, how far are ya? I mean, in Washington, it's been over a billion dollars a year on fish, and nobody knows what your goals are, when are you gonna be completed with those goals?
Those are very common questions, thank you for passing them on, I hear them quite a bit, and there have been billions of dollars spent in the state of Washington, mostly in the Columbia River. In the Skagit, the organization I work for, we've helped allocate about 50 million dollars with some matching funds, total about 80 million dollars in the Skagit River system. And we have implemented projects that have restored 1,000 acres, over 1,000 acres of estuary, we've restored over 1,000 acres of riparian area, we've protected high-quality habitats, mostly in the floodplains, that are there for fish, they're the high-quality things that are really protecting what we have now, about 2,500 acres of those, and I could go on with the metrics, like we've replaced 65 barriers that have opened up over 100 miles of habitat to fish, existing habitat. So, those are the things that we're doing, the question is, how much do you have to do, and how much is left, right?
What have they accomplished first, increasing the fish?
Right, so we have effectiveness monitoring programs in place, and the best example of that is down in the estuary, where we have done the 1,000 acres of habitat restoration, and the monitoring projects are looking at the amount of area and the type of physical habitats, but they're also tracking the fish, seeing what the fish are doing, and we can compare before and after, compare that to reference sites, and this is all documented in white literature, that we're actually seeing more fish returns juveniles using those areas than we even anticipated, which means that if we had goals, we might actually have to do less work to get to those goals than we assumed when the recovery plan was written in 2005. So, I'd love to find more time to sit down and make sure you have that information, because I think when those questions come out from the public, there are answers to some of them, it's very hard to say that a certain number of fish came back after they go to the ocean and come back, that's a little bit harder for scientists to make that connection, but we can certainly show what the projects are doing physically, we can show the fish, juvenile fish that are using them, and the increases we see from those, and we think we're having success. But as far as Chinook in the Skagit River system, we've actually had a fairly stable number of fish for fall, summer fish, a spring Chinook are actually coming back in larger numbers, we think that's a good sign, as compared to most of Puget Sound, where we've actually seen significant reductions in that same period. So, we hope that the work we're doing is actually having that return, we can show it is on the juveniles, but it's a little harder on the adults. And as far as how far, how much progress we've made, the recent calculations, we were thinking we're about 25% of the way for the tidal estuary areas, that we've made 25% of our goal in the last 10 years. So, we're a little ahead of schedule, and we're gonna try to keep that momentum if we can, but it's gonna get harder, because we've been working on public lands, which is a requirement for the state, and to move forward, we really have to reach out and get additional partners, get additional landowners to find places where we can work voluntarily with landowners, in the delta, in the main stem, in the tributaries.
Richard, do you work in conjunction with tribal fisheries?
There are three tribes that are represented at our organization, including the Swinamish Indian Tribal Community, the Sockswaddle Tribes, and the Upper Skagit Indian Tribes. Mostly, I work with the groups that are on the habitat side of the equation, but I think as we talked about last time I was here, we're also trying to track how the fishing is going, where the harvest is apportioned, and make sure that the general public and decision-makers can see that information.
And that's the key, where they're proportioned, and why aren't we getting, the bull fishermen getting more allotment than the rest?
There's a lot of background there.
Yeah, we won't go there forever. Okay, thank you.
Happy to talk about that whenever you want. I do appreciate your time, I hope you will consider joining our organization, we work very hard to be careful with what we do, how we do it, and don't push too far on those things, because we know we are a big tent organization, there's a lot of different opinions within that organization, but I think the point is where we do agree, if we can knock that out of the park, it's gonna make the contentious things easier to deal with, so that's what we really try to do.
Well, on the topic of membership, the questions like Kevin had, I think that's one area where that actually allows us an opportunity to have a window into what you're doing, and kind of a say in which way it goes, so that's why I think it may be of value to us to join with the other towns. I know I sat on the meeting this morning, I learned a lot, some of the questions like Kevin was asking, that's pretty important to know, when we're there, and when the restrictions on the landowners might be lifted, and it's a big problem, because what I learned this morning is, the Skagit, we're doing a really good job up here, some other places in the sound, they aren't doing as well, and they may never do as well, so we need to get a balance there. If we fix everything up here, but we're still under the restrictions, because everybody else is still broken, it hasn't, I mean, it's done good for the salmon, I won't say it's done no good, but it hasn't helped the landowners who are dealing with these restrictions. But I think it'd be important to be involved in this organization, just so we have a window on what's going on, that's my opinion.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thanks, Richard.
Hey, this is a public comment, time to speak about something that you'd want to come up and speak?
Where are your hands looking?
Why was there a lot of police here tonight, this big police presence?
Hi.
Hello, my name's Corianne Johnson, I have a couple of things, I'm working on a new city map, it's been 12 years since there's been one made, and I'm excited to get that wrapped up by the end of this month. Also, I wanted to invite you all to, I'm the vice president of the Arts Council, CEDOLI, and we're having an open forum to discuss art in CEDOLI, and ongoing projects and future projects, it'll be two weeks from tonight, from 6:30 to 8:00, right here.
What was that, again?
It's next Tuesday, I'm sorry, in two weeks, the 24th.
24th.
On a Tuesday or Wednesday? On a Tuesday.
Tuesday, at what time?
6:30 till 8:00.
Okay.
Right here.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll go past public comment, and we'll go all the way down to new business, item six, CEDOLI PD update, I guess this would be the chief.
So, some of you got to actually see some of the things we're doing right now, thank you for coming in, council, and those that got the chance to go through the shooting simulator, we thought that, Aaron kind of asked that we try to set that up, and that was a college-owned tool that we got to borrow from them and bring over, and got some of our officers through, got some of y'all through, just to kind of see, those are the kind of training scenarios that we get to go through, just kind of an interesting setup, I thought you guys probably enjoyed it as well. On another front, I'm gonna have a couple of my guys talk to you a little bit about some ongoing stuff that we're doing, but just last night, Aaron and I had a meeting with our Civil Service Commission, we worked out some details, and we've worked out the details for David Welch's replacement in the records department, and we're able to move Ariel Weston right in and take his spot, and then start testing for the next position to fill that in, so we're gonna have kind of a seamless transition, we lose one person, we're gonna gain another, we are gonna have to do a little more work, we are pretty much non-stop hiring, we're full-blown on hiring four officers, we've got three of them hired, we're looking to hire a fourth, and I'll have Dan tell you a little bit about that.
I have one question, though.
Yeah.
The next person you hired will be like Welch's position, or Ariel's?
No Cougars.
That's what I was gonna ask, because we need to keep it.
Right, no, already, that's gonna be a stipulation.
No, no, I want a Cougar, I like to go over there.
Really?
Yeah, I like to see how he recovers.
I was hoping to hire somebody from San Diego or something like that.
Yeah.
So.
He's tough.
Good evening, council, so I've been tasked with quite a duty to find the best officers available that have applied for CEDOLI, and this started, what, with basic oral interviews in early November, that create a list to choose from, as Chief Tucker said, we're looking for four applicants, four recruits, out of that bunch, we have collected three so far, we're still waiting for academy dates, hopefully two of them will be in the March 10th academy, that's what I'm hoping for, and we should know that pretty soon, maybe another one after that, never know, we might get lucky and get all three in the same class, never know. So, we've pretty much went to that list, and now we're gonna work on another list, and get one more out of that for the time being. And so, we can see how long that process takes, from early November, from the application process, interviews, the backgrounds, and going through everybody to this point, and then now we're looking at, once they get in the academy, another four and a half months until, hey, they're out on the road with us, another three months of training with an officer in the car before they're kind of set free on their own.
Are there any lateral people in the works at all?
Not that, not that we have really have a list for yet.
We stole everybody we could prior to going to this route, so we're, actually, we can't set foot on Swinamish territory anymore, so.
So, I mean, we fried, and so it looks like we're going, we got some young recruits, they're all 24, 25, three right now, and hopefully that, hopefully we can get them to stay here for a long term, and.
While you're saying that, I know King County and some of the other, they have two-year, are we doing a?
We're doing a three-year contract.
Three-year, oh, good, good, so they can't leave, they have to pay us back.
They can leave, but yeah, they'd have to pay us back.
Yeah, okay.
But just to be clear on that, you know, what they're paying back, and that's not a new practice for us, it's a proportionate share of the training costs, it doesn't include their own salary and benefits, which of course is the lion's share of the cost, so, but there is a monetary payback to the city if they leave before the 36 months.
And a lot of them don't qualify as a lateral unless they've been on for a couple of years, so they would be a new hire essentially at another agency, so there's not a big benefit to them getting headhunted down at the academy, and a lot of agencies are trying to work together not to do that, but the agencies that do it aren't working with the other agencies, so, yeah, there's always that chance, but I think we got some pretty solid candidates, I don't think we're gonna, we're gonna lose any other agencies, and honestly, we're all competing for the same pool of resources, as Dan was going through the list of candidates, we probably had, starting looking down the list, and we saw, one of them that we had on our hiring list got hired away, we had another one we're getting ready to pull up, he got hired away, Burlington has six in the academy right now, and that's just our neighboring agency.
That's exactly what's going on, is you have a big hiring pool of people, and everybody's looking at the same people, and then picking them up as they go, so that'll do it to a list, too.
What's the, you know, new officers that have never been before, what's the average age, you know, not just here, but I mean?
I don't know the average age, you get a lot of entry levels are usually younger people, but that's not.
24, 25.
It's not always the case, because I went to the academy 12 years ago, I went with a 49-year-old, so I mean, I mean, that doesn't really change anything.
You were a 49-year-old?
He's gotten younger. I looked really young for 49, no, I went with one, a classmate.
Are there a lot of people looking to be policemen?
There are, even through kind of safety testing, I think we ended up getting a bunch more on the list than weren't on before, so it seems like the word's gone out that we're hiring, and the list for applicants gone up quite a bit.
Yeah, we've got a pool of about 50, that we're gonna pick the top 15 of, and send out applications to, Teresa's doing that first thing tomorrow, or she did it today, and that's gonna be our next pool to try to draw one more from, and if we lose another officer this year, we'll be able to pull from that same pool.
Do you screen those, are they pretty good candidates?
We were exceptionally lucky, we had 10, or nine people on our list, and we hired three, and actually, one more on there looks okay, just we haven't finished the background, some of them were completely, well, there was one Cougar on there, we had to drop him, but other than that, I mean, it wasn't a bad, it wasn't a bad pool, it was really a good bunch of, a good bunch of people.
Right, and that's really not seen too often, to get three out of 10 left, so.
All right, our next.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I've got Jason Harris, Sergeant Harris has got kind of an update on some active stuff we got going on, and he brought a guest with him tonight. That's our beer-by kid.
It's our applications to join the force.
Yeah.
Undercover.
Good evening, guys and gals, what I'm handing out here is kind of my report I give to the chief at the end of every year, and specifically what we do, I've been in front of you a few times, usually drug-related type stuff that we're doing, I'm also the gang officer, so what you're seeing now is the results of 2014 for the gangs and for the drug stuff that we did do, the proactive stuff. The front sheet is the drugs, it's not as exciting as it was the year before that, simply because, as you all know, we had a lot of changes in our department, so a lot of our guys were busy, tired, and we just didn't have the bodies to go after this aggressively. We were able to take out seven independent dealers from the city last year, so that's seven, seven individuals that were selling, that sold us drugs, that we were able to take out and arrest. We did, of those seven, we only did 10 controlled buys, which isn't a lot, we've done a lot more of those in the past, but still, for us to do 10 controlled buys was pretty good. If you look at what we purchased, all we bought last year was heroin, where years passed, we were buying meth, marijuana, prescription pills, we'd buy the whole lot. The informants we were collecting or gathering there, all they were doing was buying heroin, and heroin was cheap, we were spending about 20 bucks a purchase on heroin when we do a controlled buy. So, we don't have to buy a pound of it, it's the same charge we buy a pound or a little bitty gram, it's the same charge, so that's good. The money we spent last year was $460, so we spent $460 on the drugs or the informants, and what we do is we spend that money on, you know, these guys that have a cellphone, so we'll go out, buy them a cellphone, buy them cellphone minutes, they can communicate with us. We've bought baby food, we've bought food, cigarettes for our informants, things like that, that's where that money goes. Doing the seizures or thing, property that we're able to collect and seize was a total of $33,000, or $3,300. We took two cars last year, we sold one, it only sold for $600, so you know, our quality vehicles are not the greatest, but if we're buying $20 a pop for, you know, we're not, we're not getting a whole lot. We have one car that actually broke down in our garage, we can't get started to sell, so I don't know what we're gonna do with that one yet, but you know, at least the drug dealer doesn't have it.
Keith, Mike, Keith, Keith, interest?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Toyota Ford or Jaguar?
Well, it says 4Runner, Toyota 4Runner. Not interested. We took out seven houses, so seven drug houses are no longer, which is good from last year, and one of, we got one gun last year off of these guys, so that was a good thing, yes, sir.
Why do you think that is, I circled that number, it seems, I don't know.
Which number is that?
The gun seizures, does that mean that there's not a lot of guns in the hands of the drug dealers or the houses that are dealing with this?
Our level of drug dealers that we're dealing with, they are the street-level nuisance people, if they get a gun, they don't have it for a day or two before they trade it, sell it, get rid of it, so you know, we're not going after the, you know, the al capones or if you will.
But so the nuisance, like, I guess to tell people, I guess, so the suspected drug houses are probably not dangerous, other than just that more annoying, or are they dangerous, or?
We treat every drug dealer as very dangerous.
Yes.
Because drugs and guns go hand in hand, we anticipate, the year before that, we take, I think we took 14 guns the year prior to this, we see them all the time, last year we didn't see that many of them. A lot of it, when we're seeing them, when we're buying the meth from the meth dealers, they're a little more paranoid, they're the ones that will arm themselves because they're scared, the heroin addicts, they just nod off and don't do a whole lot, so.
Do you see this increasing, when we get our four new officers?
Absolutely.
Everybody gets on track?
Absolutely, and all, unfortunately, there, you know, CEDOLI is not unique, every city has this problem.
Yeah.
Malvern kind of followed our lead a couple of years ago, and they're going after it. We could go non-stop if we had the bodies, one year we had a time where we had to order drugs from another city, that was a great year, where the word got out so much that we were out there hitting these guys.
That's what I want.
They don't want to sell. When we backed off, because when we had our shootings and stuff that year, within eight months, I could have bought from 12 houses already, we have to stay on top of it, we recognize that, we've seen the pattern go through, and our goal, fortunately, our guys in the squad room, that's what they want, you know, we have a lot of officers that love doing this stuff. We're taking out these low-level dealers, you're taking away the vehicle prow suspects, the home burglary suspects, because they're doing those crimes to support their habit, so that's why we're targeting the dealers, to get them out and bring them in, and we're extremely aggressive, you know, if you got a, you're unemployed, you got a 50-inch TV, now the city of CEDOLI owns it, if you sold us drugs, because I don't believe you bought that. You have a chance to come to a hearing and tell an examiner that, no, you did buy it with your tax return, but that hasn't happened, so I expect to see that more.
How do you see the future canine unit fitting into the drug puzzle?
That, I believe that'll be incredible, the word will get out, we can have a dog here in a heartbeat, and the word will get out on the streets so fast that they're gonna avoid, they'll be going up the concrete down the south of Skagit, get to Mount Vernon, I believe that, just because we are, we're that aggressive, we have no problem, you know, the chief supports our actions with what we do, if we impound a car for a search warrant, you know, we've got the room for it, we've got the resources to do it, a dog is just gonna make it that much easier, that much faster. With the new dog, they're not gonna be marijuana-trained, where all the federal dogs currently are marijuana-trained, because they're border patrol dogs, things like that, they get shipped all over the place, so the new dogs going through the academy now, they don't test for, or train for marijuana, because it's legal in the state, so there are no non-marijuana dogs available to us right now, so if we hit one, they won't be marijuana-trained, which would be awesome, then we can help this school out a little bit more, and it'd just be a great, great thing, I could see good things happening with it. So, we, this year already, we took out one house already, we did three controlled buys over on Warner, the Warner Block of Warner Street, now, when we served the search warrant on that house, well, should back up, that drug dealer, when he delivered to us, he rode his bicycle, so I seized that bicycle, I don't know what we're gonna do with it, but that was his mode of transportation, so that kind of shows you the level of dealer that we're dealing with.
Bikes for bucks.
I'm sorry?
Bikes for bucks.
Right, right, it had no lights on, so you know, that's bad.
Just like Brett's bike.
So, he didn't wear a helmet, so, so that's kind of what's happening. We currently have one active case going, where we're actively buying drugs right now, so hopefully we'll have some results coming up in a couple of weeks on that, so that'll be kind of, kind of good. Before I get to the gang sheet, the guest I brought is Ben, Ben is a CEDOLI high school student, just doing his senior project on law enforcement, so we get quite a bit of those every year that come to me and do ride-alongs and whatnot. Well, this year, I thought it'd be unique, because we need to be, fortunately, Ben's 18 years old, but he's a senior, so we utilized him tonight on an underage beer-buy sting. So, the last two nights, we went to 15 locations in the city and tried to buy beer, using an 18-year-old with no ID, two of the, two of the 18 locations sold us beer, so, or excuse me, the 12.
I said 15.
15, thank you, my numbers are all, so we had 15 total, so that was, 13 of them were compliant, which really is a good thing, if you think about it. We're working with liquor control, they'll get copies of our reports, the last time we did this, we sent letters out that, hey, we did this compliance check, you failed, that was it, this time we arrested the clerks that sold the beer, so they'll have a court date coming up, and liquor control will do whatever liquor control does administratively. So, we did that the last couple nights, and you know, fortunately, without the help of the volunteer, we couldn't have done that, so that was a big help for us, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Then I'll jump to the gangs real quick, the gangs last year, knock on wood, was pretty quiet compared to the previous year, previous year, we had the homicide and a couple shootings, it all came, bad, bad stuff. We had a bar fight, that Bandito Gang, the motorcycle guy, he was armed with a loaded gun in the bar during a fight, which is a no-no, you can't, can't do that, he didn't hold the weapon, but it was on his person, so he got in trouble for that.
So, what do you, what happens when, if you had a gun in a bar?
You get arrested.
Yeah.
And you get a court date, and we seize the gun.
Well, what?
Well, what, what do they get suspended for?
It's, it's up, it's a possession of farm in, in an unlawful area, I don't know exact the wording.
Is it like a fine, or?
It's a misdemeanor. Or maybe a gross misdemeanor, I don't, I don't, I wouldn't see it that much, fortunately. So it's one of those I'd have to look up. But he, he came to court, talked with the judge, and, and did his, his thing there, so. That wasn't involved in the fight, it was just, you know, he was a big brewery biker guy, and he got arrested, and during the arrest for disorderly conduct, we found the weapon. And then he's like, oh, I forgot I even had that, so. That happens, but fortunately, that gun didn't come out during the fight, so. We had two thefts, where we arrested two, and these are Southside Kings members, and then the 12 graffiti cases, which are Southside King members. Now, I kind of made a project out of Southside Kings, I don't really like them very much, because they're the most visual gangs in Skagit County, with their graffiti and, and their blue and all this stuff. The thefts and the graffiti are related. These are done, we, we believe are being done by 14, 15, and 16-year-old kids. Two live in town, and the others live in Burlington, and I think one in Malvern. So at our gang meetings, we got together and it's like, what are we gonna do to proactively go after these guys? Right now, law enforcement in Skagit County's done a pretty good job and took those shot callers, we kind of cut the head off the snake. So all the adults are in prison for the members of the Southside Kings gang. So we had a bunch of these kids running around with their uncles or brothers that are in prison, not really knowing how the code works, if you will, in the gang, and what to do, so they're out just graffitiing up and stealing beer and selling it on Facebook and, and doing that stuff. But it's a nuisance to our citizens, you know, we, it's not a good thing. So one of them happened to get, one of the 14-year-olds got a probation violation. They went to school with gang graffiti on in Burlington. They got a hold of the probation officer, they issued a $10,000 warrant for his arrest for violating conditions of release. So he lives in Burlington. So myself, the Malvern gang officer, and the sheriff's office, and Burlington officer all went to the house and arrested him on his warrant, in Burlington. So the, the message we're trying to send out there is, is we don't care where you are in Skagit County, we all will come for you. You see every agency at your doorstep. Mom and dad, when we get in the door, they see all the uniforms, they see all the police cars outside, and we have that heart-to-heart, this is why we're here. This ends now, we're not gonna put up with it. We, as, as a group in law enforcement, are united, and we're gonna, no matter where you go, we're gonna come find you. And that was the message we're sending out to these guys. If you're a Southside Kings member and you have a felony warrant for your arrest, we're gonna come get you. We don't care where you are. We got one last week that did a robbery in Burlington, he assaulted the clerk from selling beer, he was 16. They went and got him before I came on duty, he was hiding underneath his mom's bed. But now he's in jail facing robbery charges. So we want to hit those guys pretty good. So to my knowledge, we've got one, maybe two, Southside Kings members living in town, and they're just kids. But I drive, whenever I'm on duty, I drive by their house twice, let them know that I see them. So we kind of put the pressure on them and, and deter their activities, so. It's not that big of a town, unfortunately, not by you, not by you.
Did he drop out?
Actually, the one is, the 16-year-old is a dropout. And he's currently living with his grandma, because mom and dad kind of threw their hands up, and, and grandma's at her wits' end. So she, she's tried, she works with us well, but she's, she's at her career end. Any other questions for me?
Yeah. I'm gonna back up to, you made a comment when you were talking about the drug dogs, that marijuana was legal. How do you tell the difference between legal marijuana and not legal marijuana, and what do you do about not legal marijuana?
You mean as far as quantity?
When you go in and you know it's black market, not, not correctly bought?
We can't prove that. That's, that's too hard to prove.
The question is, how do you tell?
You don't. I mean, and, and even if that, the prosecution isn't, isn't there, you know, they're so backlogged on their, their stuff, unless you've got a 300 plant grow op, that nobody really seems to care. We do, we do deal with it, we do see it, but you know, there's not a whole lot that really happens with it. Though most of those guys are, you know, they do sell it on the street, the, the black market stuff is, is half the price of the store. You know, it's out there a lot, but we're not seeing mass quantities.
Is it something that could be seized then during the, like, let's say you went in for other, other type of drugs, is, I mean, is that something, all the assets could be seized at that point?
You could, but the burden of proof would be on us to prove that that was not purchased at a legitimate store, it was purchased illegal. And that's an extremely high thing to prove. So we probably could, I mean, we could take it, they'd probably end up getting it back.
The only marijuana that we're dealing with and prosecuting is juveniles.
Yeah.
And we still got the kids that go down behind Aaron's house and smoke weed in the morning before they go to school, so.
And mine.
Yeah. And, and those are really the only ones that we're dealing with, the only marijuana, because we, basically, like Jason was saying, we don't have the, the prosecutors not doing much with marijuana at all. And there's no way to tell where it came from or what it is, and it's not worth our efforts to put a lot of effort into something that, that can actually just go right out to Smuggler Brothers and buy, or Smuggler Brothers, is that what it's called?
The, the other scenario would be if we have more than, is it 16 plants?
Right.
So if, if you go into a, you know, a home and there's 26 plants, and they've got their, you know, medical card, the law allows the homeowner then to pick their favorite 16, and then law enforcement can destroy the rest. So I presume that's something we still do if there's excess quantity beyond.
Correct. We have done that.
You had to grow up at Brickyard Creek not too long ago. Right?
Did we?
I think. Was it Brickyard or?
Was that Nathan's house? Oh, yeah, yes, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's Brickyard Creek.
Yeah.
It was in the way of public works, trying to do creek maintenance.
I had a question about graffiti. Since the adults were arrested, did that kind of curve, I noticed there's not as much around. I have seen some downtown, kind of in the tavern area, like I think behind overflow that.
Yeah, that, and that's actually, unfortunately, Bob Park's not with us anymore, that we're gonna paint it up the next day. But that's, that's back from November, October.
But it's, it's, it's kind of subsided with.
It is. Usually, when the graffiti comes out, what happens is it's usually they're having one of their meetings or initiation.
A little war.
So for them to get, you know, they don't really do the jump in a gang where they get beat up for 13 seconds, like they used to, it's like, okay, you wanna be part of the gang, we're gonna go out and smoke weed, drink some beers, and you gotta go graffiti the town. That's their initiation. So usually when that happens, that's when we're seeing the, the big spikes. And these, the graffiti we had last year was two big incidences, where I was able to track them on Facebook, these were the parties that were happening. Just not enough that I could prove that they're the ones that did it.
So they don't get their ribs broken anymore?
No. No, they don't.
I learned something tonight.
Do we have an active gang in Skagit County that's making a lot of money?
Not that I'm aware of. Not, not a lot. The, you know, most of these guys are unemployed, they're going around with their EBT cards and, and their non-legal marijuana. But no, I don't.
But that's not happening?
They're, they're out there, they are available, they're, they're around, but nothing that we're, that's big on our radar. Which either they're doing it smart, and they're not getting the spotlight on them, or they're just not there.
Oh, the heroin is ultimately pointed to some sort of, not necessarily a gang, but organized crime-related gangs, but they're so big that we don't see them. It's like, you know, the Mexican mafia, whatever the big Mexican gang drug lords are in Mexico that are sending that up here, those are the ones that are controlling all of the flow coming in. We're not seeing those people hanging out in Cedar Valley, we're seeing the little SSK characters and that.
All righty. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I assume that's Ben, chief. Done?
Code enforcement.
So I guess in, in an ongoing effort to do our town cleanup, Aaron has been working with Laura, doing a lot of code enforcement activities. We've got, had an active case generated. Jermaine, did you talk, ask about the Gen X area out there? And it looks like they're starting to work on cleaning that up a bit. But it's just an ongoing process. We've got several other bit, or several other homes that we're keeping an eye on and working on, right across the alley here, we've got a junkyard going on there. We find a couple of abandoned vehicles around town. They're not all councilmen wagons, but we're, it's, it's, it's an ongoing.
Hard, terrible.
It's an, it's an ongoing battle, but it's, I, I think you're seeing definite improvements. And as Laura has the time, Aaron said he'd, he'd be happy to have two of her, but you know, it really is that, I guess, the broken windows theory of taking care of problems. A lot of these places, really, as soon as we start adding a little bit of pressure to the problem area, they're, they begin to compliance. And we're even, I mean, we're even hitting a few of them as we have time to do it. Laura's got a pretty heavy load with animals and, and the bigger code compliance issues, to hit the parking issues, parking on the sidewalk and all that, it's all quality of life stuff, and it really does seem like all of those small things that we're working on, and I know Aaron and the mayor, or anytime they're driving around, they'll, they'll come up with something more to check into an address, and it really points us in a direction of just fixing all those small problems. And almost every one of those small problems leads to a bigger problem being fixed, a bigger mess to be cleaned up, or a better handle on getting compliance from people. Whenever somebody gets targeted for a code compliance, and they see their neighbors down the road with a junkyard in their yard, says, well, why are you coming after me? Why aren't you going after them? I said, well, we are. We're going after them. You're just, we got to you before them, they're next. And it's really working, I think you'll, you'll see some good, you'll see some good results. And we would like to have, anything that you see that is something that we can address, we'd sure like to hear about it, because we're not, we're pretty much working at capacity with the code compliance, but if you see a special project that does need to be addressed, that helps direct us in that, so we're not having Laura, you know, just going out looking. She's being directed to do something, and actually helps with our, our, the whole package. And for, if, those of you that haven't seen one of our code compliance packages, this is, this is a, a full meal deal. Aaron and the mayor are involved in it, we've got city staff and, and looking to see if utilities are being paid. As soon as we find out that there's some sort of bank action on a property, Aaron's developed a network of informants in the banking industry, I think, that gives him information on who to write letters to, and then Laura starts generating letters and sending those out, and we're getting some, we're getting some really good results. And I think it's, it's, it's a time-consuming and absorbing job, but I think it's well worth the effort. And it's part of just that whole bigger picture, the kind of things that Jason's doing with the drug buys, and we don't have the manpower to sit around and wait for bad things to happen. So we're taking a proactive approach, we're going after the bad guys, we're running them out of town, and when Jason's going out and hitting the SSK guys at their house, they may not have done anything that day. But they may not have done anything, because we kept showing up at their house, and every time they tried to drive with suspended license, we're taking their cars away, we're writing them tickets, we're hauling them off to jail. And these proactive beer buys, that isn't just because we're having fun out there, we're actually trying to eliminate problems in underage sales. So we're trying to take a proactive approach across the board. Code compliance is one of those things that isn't necessarily a big criminal issue, but it helps in the whole bigger picture. And I think we're, I think we're gonna see more and more results, and, and Council McAlbert mentioned, we get more officers, we're gonna have more crime reported, because we're actually have officers out there going after criminals and hauling them away. We're still working on trying to get a place to put them, there's no room at the inn, but we're finding ways, Luigi's cutting back, is changing his hours a little bit, but we're still using the, the offender work program as a different process. We're working closely with our new prosecutor, Pat Hayden, who's trying to find alternate ways of taking care of problems. We're trying all those different avenues to fix major problems that we got. And honestly, we don't have any major problems that anybody else doesn't have, but I think we've got a crew that even as short-staffed as we are, is taking a real proactive and, instead of a reactive approach, we're hammering the crap out of these guys. And we're actually finding it a little difficult at times to find drug dealers to buy from, just because they're just not there. They're always there, but they're not as plentiful as they are. And we'll fish this, we'll fish this little fishing hole out for a while, and then as soon as we slow down, they're gonna pick right back up, so we have to stay on it. So that was kind of a long answer to a short, what do we do with code compliance?
Great. So we are, committee reports, reports from officers, we'll have an executive session tonight and afterwards. And so we'll start with the committee reports.
Chief?
I have nothing more to say, I talked a whole lot more than I intended. I thought you could.
And Dean's gonna start elbowing me if I say anything else.
Nothing there.
John?
I think you guys heard enough last question.
Mark?
It's been a while since I gave you one, but you have a fairly updated council report from us, which gives you an idea of what's going on design-wise, so I won't comment on that tonight. I did want to point out, we're getting close to the final completion of the Highway 20 project, there's an update on the change order status, that's pretty close to at the end of the rope on that. We're gonna be out, our Strider Will, next week, fixing some of the cross-hatch striping over around SR9 and SR20, and, and on, on North Ferry Street, they striped it with the wrong size, and so they're gonna go out and fix that as soon as they get a dry day. So you'll see a little traffic control for a few hours, probably Monday, Tuesday, something like that, and then that will be done. I wanted to point out to you, one thing that is not mentioned in the report, but which I will put in for the next time. Under the new stormwater permit that we're working under now, there is a requirement that we, our municipal code and our standards, for some new requirements that we have, the term LID is probably familiar to you from a different context, but this is low, low impact design is what the acronym stands for, and we've been mandated under the new permit to incorporate in our code and in our standards, the use of, to the maximum of extent feasible, low-impact development type of stormwater facilities. Now that would be like rain gardens, such as you see over by the food bank, and that, that Oaks put in when he did his office over there. Varied type of systems that infiltrate rather than going to ponds. And moving away from a lot, reliance on ponds, that's a good thing in the one sense, in that ponds are, you'll be hearing about that at the next work session, our problem with the maintenance of ongoing privately maintained ponds that we have in the city. The other side of the coin, though, is, is LID doesn't always work very well, and it can actually carry a pretty big price tag, maintenance-wise as well, because, you know, a poorly maintained rain garden is unsightly as is a pond. So we've been made the, the cops to enforce that for all the private operators in the city, city under our permit. So anyway, there is a code compliance webinar that is scheduled for March the 24th, and I'll send you out a notice on this later, that is designed to inform officials and, such as yourselves, on that process, because that will be coming to you at some point with a, with a revision of the municipal code. So I just wanted to make you aware that that's coming down the pipe, and encourage you, if you could take the time, it's a one and a half hour webinar on March the 24th, to look in on that, so you, you know what we're facing, and what our requirements are under our permit. So that's basically it for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Usually. Aaron?
Well, there's a lot going on. I've got a couple items to hand out to you. The first is, been the subject of prior executive sessions, what you're getting is a settlement agreement and release that's proposed between the city and the county to address a jail medical issue that's been ongoing for a number of years. I think we discussed this not too long ago, this. This is a form that's in draft agreement between the parties, and would have the city paying the county $2,500 in full and final settlement of the $26,000 disputed bill. So, I'm looking for a motion to authorize the city to enter into this agreement tonight. Of course, if anybody wants to discuss it in more detail, we can certainly hold it until the executive session.
This is a no-brainer, unless you guys want to... You said the county has paid that?
The county paid $26,446.25, subsequently billed the city. The city refused to pay. This resolves that bill for $2,500.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the release and settlement agreement between the city of Cedar Wully and the county.
Second?
Okay, we got a motion by Councilmember Wagner, and a second by Councilmember Carnegie, to enter into the release and settlement agreement between the city and the county. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Against? Pass, you have us. Okay.
Also on your day, this is the declaration of civil emergency. This is a fairly atypical action that's taken. In fact, the last time I could see that we'd done this was, I think, in 2008, when we had some neighborhood flooding. We had a situation that emerged yesterday with a, you know, significantly blocked sewer line at the 10-foot depth level, with a replacement that needed to occur from the sewer main all the way to the resident's home. There was sewer backing up under the home, a cesspool under the garage. It was messy. And unfortunately, we weren't capable of really getting in to assess the extent and location of the damage until it was dug up. And this is all in the alley between Talbot and Nelson. It's actually in the alley right behind my house. It was not my sewer line. But-
Is this where those guys smoked pot, right?
It's right where they were smoking pot.
You solved it.
Yeah, yeah. So, the situation with this is, it was really infeasible for us to mobilize a second crew to come in. The city's responsible for approximately seven or eight feet of this project, that is from the main to the edge of the alley. And the homeowner already had a crew mobilized, and that crew had the appropriate gear and trench boxes and training. They dug from the house all the way to the edge of right-of-way. At that point, they could get a camera in and could see that our line was also full of holes, not collapsed, but had holes in it, therefore needed to be replaced in order to fix it. And really, to do the job correctly, you start at the main and work back to the house. So, the mayor declared the emergency as a result of these unusual conditions. That freed the public works director to execute a contract with the contractor on scene to do the work for the city, so we could get our first seven or eight feet done. At that point, then the contractor moves back onto the private property and is working for the homeowner. So, my understanding is they were able to complete the job today, I think, with the exception of maybe some final backfilling and site restoration. But consistent with our code, we need to present this to the city council at the next available opportunity, which is tonight, and seek your confirmation of the civil emergency. So, I'm looking for a motion to confirm the emergency as prepared. I guess you could think of it as ratification, really. It's just like you're ratifying the actions that the mayor took.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to confirm the declaration of civil emergency.
Second?
Okay, we got a motion by Councilmember Sam Strong, and a second by Councilmember Carnegie, to confirm the declaration of civil emergency. Any further discussion?
Just a question. Is there like a determination of what might have caused it? And is that like what's being replaced durable to withstand?
Well, this is just your old, I think it's VC pipe that was probably installed-
Yeah, this was actually an old concrete line.
Concrete.
And we have a, we, we've got an ongoing problem with that. About, oh, 60% of our sewer system was concrete. We're in the process of replacing much of that. Over, over the course of time, the 70, 80 years that's been in the ground, sewer gases have thinned the, the pipe down to nothing in some cases, and it just develops holes, the joints fail, and that kind of stuff. So, I hate to tell you this, but your services are probably not too much better shape in that particular alley, because they're all about the same time.
So, then, that material that they're replacing with that green plastic, is that withstand a certain amount of time, or?
Yeah, those PVC lines are rated for 50 years. Shouldn't be any real problem with that.
So, do we have, I mean, but is, is, I think this seems cheap. I mean, is there something better that we should, we should ask the council in the past that makes it more durable, so it maybe has a longer lifespan, or?
Well, that's the state of the art right now. That's basically what we're installing for new sewer systems. On, on a lot of the pipe, as you've heard in the past, we've been using cured-in-place pipe, which is another technology. We can do it without digging it up, and we've been doing quite a few of those projects over the last eight years. And so, it's a different form of PVC, basically, that goes in and is cured in the pipe.
Thank you.
It is what you're asking about.
Anymore? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Against? Okay, passes.
Okay, so the next item's a northern state project. This is something that's gotten to be extremely active and fast-moving. I've got a couple requests for you tonight. Apologize, they're late materials, they're expensive, but I'll tell you what's going on. So, just to back up a step, I think it's pretty much common knowledge now that Peter and Susan Janicki have formed a new company called Janicki Bioenergy. That is the company that is in partnership with the Bill and Linda Gates Foundation, who helped develop the new Omni processor. This Omni processor, if you haven't seen it, is a pretty remarkable machine that takes biosolids and septage, and turns it into clean water, electricity, and ash that's commoditized. This machine is, is, is being delivered right now to Dakar. There's a second machine being built, and the expectation is that within a fairly short window, they like to get to building about a machine a day. These Omni processors are expected to be controlled via remote links to the city of Cedar Wully and the Janicki Bioenergy Command Center. So, pretty interesting stuff, a lot of moving parts. Peter has indicated a preference as to where he'd like to locate a new research and development facility campus, along with a major manufacturing facility, something that would be larger than the scope of the Hamilton plant. He's indicated a belief that he'd have about 1,000 jobs within five years, paying somewhere in the range of $50 an hour on average. I think the company is currently about 35 jobs, and is hiring another 30 or so in the engineering area. So, they're, they're ramping up rapidly. He's looked around, and he's, he's considering two sites. His preference is a northern state campus in Cedar Wully. The second site, the runner-up, would be Utah. So, the stakes are fairly high, if we're interested in keeping this business that was born here in Cedar Wully, in Cedar Wully. So, that's the current development that is overlaid upon the now over a year-old process and partnership between the city, Skagit County, and the port, where we've been working and jointly funding the adaptive reuse study, along with Department of Enterprise Services. So, we've got a team of architects and folks who've been out working on the site, kind of identifying the boundaries of the historical Olmsted Village, the nature and condition of existing historical structures, and trying to come up with a plan, following a number of community meetings, of what to do with the site that would fit the community, actually be marketable, and would work. Throughout this process, I think a lot of people have kind of joked that, wouldn't it be great if Microsoft showed up and wanted to run a campus? Or Gates Foundation just thought this was a great spot to do some cool invention? We didn't actually include that in our final list of targeted areas, because we didn't believe it was something that was market, market feasible. However, even as we looked at specialty housing, and, you know, some educational components and some of those other uses that were ultimately on the list, we kept lamenting, wouldn't it be great if? And then this happened. So, the partners have been, have responded with, you know, some haste to try to line everything up to make this a possibility. And the most recent activity is a joint effort in the legislature to change the leasing authority of Department of Enterprise Services, to allow the property to be leased for a period that exceeds the director's current authority, which is 20 years. We've asked for 60 years. And the concept is that Enterprise Services would lease the campus to the port, and then the port would lease the property to Janicki Bioengineering, or Bioenergy, and proceed with some sort of development, following all of the necessary processes. So, the processes that are out there, and part of what we're struggling to address right now, will be annexation of the site into the city limits, and then essentially master planning the site to ensure the integrity of the Olmsted Village with the manufacturing piece, really, on an adjacent property. I don't have the map in front of me, but if you imagine going up Fruitdale Road from National Garden location, which would also not be disturbed, you have the campus, which is a little over 100 acres, with the historic look and feel, the buildings, the special colonial architecture. And then, as you move further west, there's about 100-acre rectilinear tract that's off of the campus, that's also directly accessible by Fruitdale Road, well, before, you know, collapsed. Theoretically accessible from Fruitdale Road when rebuilt. You know, so, so the concept is that would be the location for the manufacturing facility. So, the historical campus remains historical. The redevelopment that occurs on that campus would be historically appropriate, and displacements that could occur would occur over time. We're not looking at anything happening immediately. So, pretty interesting stuff. The Port Commission voted last night to authorize $100,000 out of their emergency reserve fund to help fund this process. The county is looking at an authorization of $50,000 to $75,000. I think they're going to the Board of Commissioners next week to talk about that. Our partnership last time had the county and the port each putting in $25,000, and we came in at $5,000. So, they recognize that our capability is lower, but they would like to see the city continue to fund the partnership through the interlocal agreement at some dollar amount. I'm suggesting $25,000, and this would be used to continue the master planning effort, as well as the site planning. And then, we had another rather interesting development that came up here on, I think it was yesterday, actually, yeah, it was yesterday. The Department of Commerce has $212,000 set aside for planned action, pre-development environmental work, to prepare a site such as this to be permitted in the future. They, they were really, the governor was really impressed with the way the city of Everett had planned for, planned action for the Boeing plant to expand a long time ago. And when the XXX came in, they found that the new facility was already within the scope of a prior environmental impact statement. So, it was already contemplated, the environmental legwork was done, they could just proceed to the building permit stage. So, the governor thought that was rather intriguing, and sought and received $2 million in the last biennial budget to fund additional planned actions in other sites. Commerce has got $212,000 left, they wanted, they have to spend it in the next four months. And it just so happens that those dollars line up exactly with what we're trying to accomplish, which is the pre-environmental planning to allow for the permitting of a major manufacturing facility. And so, this would increase our scope of work slightly, to include things like, I think Victor Salmon coming on board to do a traffic study, to tie in with our SEPA process. And I think they're talking about Dr. Lyndon Lee coming on board to do the wetland delineation work and environmental prep work, so we would know what's up on site, be able to do that. So, that's something that we're expecting to hear fairly shortly about. Those dollars may flow to the county, and then from the county, through our partnership to the port, to actually engage the consultants and get the work done. So, lots of moving pieces there. The second piece of the puzzle that I'm looking for action on, your consideration, is on the receiving side of this. We have a planning department that's staffed with one, John, and you could generously call it one if you count Joanne and back out his building time. What we're looking at trying to do here is annex the site, and theoretically beginning the annexation process later this month. And I'll talk about that. In fact, we have a joint meeting scheduled between the city council, the county commission, and the Port of Skagit Commissioners on February 27th. So, we need to get that on your calendars. That'll be at 10:30 at the port, February 27th, Friday, 10:30 at the port. The purpose of that meeting is to bring the partners fully into alignment, and specifically make the request to the Department of Enterprise Services of what we want to accomplish on this site. One of those things would be to begin the annexation process. So, I'm looking for, is I'd like to bring on a consultant to do the economic development work on our side of the process, and to specifically manage the annexation work, as well as the master planning and planned action piece for the city, to help John in that process, really to lead the process, so it becomes something that we can do timely, correctly, and through that process. I've talked to Janet Hansen, who I think many of you know. She's willing to help us. She's willing to help us for a place that's, you know, extremely favorable from my perspective. So, I've got a contract which we'll send up. It's, the contract itself is our standard form agreement, so you've seen it, you know, a dozen times before. The details of this one are straight hourly costs of $50 an hour, with a do not exceed of $25,000. If this is something that you want to think about and wait, then certainly you're prerogative. However, there's work that I think we need to be accomplishing next week. So, that's the reason for it coming to you now. This is, again, a really fast-moving project. We're coming up to a go-no-go decision from the project applicant, and my objective is to have the city position to do everything we can to facilitate the process and make it happen the right way. Any questions I can answer?
Where's this money coming from?
Oh, excellent question. We were fairly fortunate in 2014 to collect more dollars in sales tax in particular than we budgeted. So, we have a combination of more dollars in our ending fund balances and the general fund than we had budgeted, as well as, you know, we had that $32,000 from the hospital come in. So, we're looking at $50,000, and there's more than $50,000 available. I'm expecting that Mark over here will be coming to talk to you about spending some money on completing some public works projects, such as our Cook Road project, with some of those dollars. And I don't know if you want to talk about the specifics, but we're, we're looking at somewhere in excess of, you know, $200,000.
Well, I want to see that fence put around Bing and Park. You're looking at 200K that we didn't know we had?
Correct. Well, I would say it differently. I would say that there's probably $200,000 more than we had budgeted for.
Let's get her down.
So, not that we didn't know that the dollars were there, but that it's a combination of having not spent everything that was budgeted and receiving more than we budgeted to receive. So, it's not, and I want to be real clear, that's not money that you could spend and expect to spend annually. This is one-time-type money. This is money that we would typically put away into reserve funds to be available to engage in activities, one-time type things. So, it's not a new revenue stream. It's not money that we could count on for 2016 or 2017. It's just by the circumstances of the 2014 to 2015 behaviors in spending and sales tax collections, there's that money available. So, it's a long way of saying-
I thought sales tax was up a little.
It is.
And so, that, if you think the good times were here, you're going to stumble over again next year.
Yeah, but- Yeah, but we don't think that way. And we didn't, and we didn't budget that way.
I understand that, but I can't, it's not a one-shot deal.
We also were fortunate to not have a major flood or major snowstorm. So, we didn't have those overtimes, materials, all those sorts of costs, so far anyway this year.
So, we should put it back in public works.
I have a couple of questions. What could happen to put the brakes on this project? Peter Janiki has two sites in mind, being this one in Utah. He needs to select. What could happen that would totally cabash it here?
There are a number of scenarios. The state could, you know, the state legislature could choose not to extend the authority of DES.
How much time do they have to make that decision?
Well, we've got bills in both houses, including, you know, the one in the Senate is supported by our senator as well as the senator from the 40th district. So, very broad bipartisan support. Timeline-wise, the one in the Senate, and the reason they chose this path is they, these were intended to be policy bills that could go through the process more quickly than a capital budget type proviso. So, I would have to defer to Cameron about the process on that. But I think the expectation is that these would not be happening at the end of the session, but that they would be happening earlier. So, they're both in committee now.
And the session ends in March?
No, this session is expected to go till August or September. It's a 90-day session, but the conventional wisdom is that they're not going to be able to complete a budget until summer's out.
So, are we going to continue with our processes in expectation that it's going to go through the legislation?
We're not getting any negative signals in Olympia yet from, from the folks that, you know, and the port's the leader on this under our partnership. They're managing the process. So, they've been down there. They've talked to, you know, the governor's staff. They've been in the House and in the Senate. They have a political consulting firm working the hill on the issue, and so far, broad bipartisan support for the concept of keeping, you know, these thousand high-paying jobs in Washington State. So, that's one potential area where the whole thing could go off track. Another one would be the, you know, there's a public process. And certainly, once we've annexed the site and we begin the master planning work, there are a number of opportunities for public to engage and be comfortable with what we're doing. I would say if the community didn't like it, wasn't supportive, wanted to go through multiple appeals and those sorts of things, I would imagine that would be problematic for the applicant. We're very fortunate, I mean, this is, this is the unusual scenario, is if you're just looking at economics and speed, you know, at least in my mind, Utah should win. But we have an applicant who's from here and has other reasons why he wants to be here. So, we have, the playing field's not level in making that determination. Now, Commerce, I will tell you, having talked to a bunch of folks there yesterday, you know, they're very, very excited about this, and I think would like to do everything they could to help see this site in Washington State here.
Has Bill Gates been up to the Northern State properties?
No, he's been on Fruitdale Road to the Omni-processor. I'm not aware that he's been up to Northern State.
Would I get him to come on up?
Yeah, well, and the port is working with, you know, Peter and Susan Janiki and the foundation right now on a joint press release that would come out with the port, the city, the foundation, Janiki essentially announcing that this is what we're working on. So, here's, because there's so many rumors swirling around the community, you know, I've heard the crazy rumor that we're going to be up there demolishing buildings tomorrow. And, you know, that's, that's just not the case. There's a lot of work between now and a project, and, you know, I'm hearing numbers like $100 million in capital investment that would go up there to make this happen. So, very significant. I would say regionally game-changing if it happens. But there are, you know, to answer your question, I think there are lots of ways it could not happen.
So, let's say we get it annexed, we do everything what we're doing, and then Peter decides to go somewhere else.
Yes. Well, so, under that scenario, you know, we would have invested the $25,000 with our partnership, which still is moving our mission of the adaptive reuse study forward. So, we're still continuing with the concept that we want local control of the site and something other than, you know, quasi-incarceration-type uses up there. We want it open to the public, we want to respect the history and all that. With regard to the Janet Hansen proposed contract, that's an hourly contract. So, under that scenario, we would not have exhausted our funds. We would have gotten it to the annexation phase. We'd stop work on any master planning efforts. Those dollars would remain with us. And then, the tax question, which I think might be what you're getting at, Mayor, when they're in the county, we don't respond to law enforcement there. They pay, the state pays a fee to the city of about $22,000 a year for fire protection, and they pay a penalty sewer rate to us for being outside the city limits. So, annexation would end the fire contract probably, as well as the sewer penalty, most certainly. It would then bring to that site utility taxes on all their utilities, you know, natural gas, electricity, cable, water. We didn't do the air one, but we could consider that for the site. That's a joke. And then, the last one-
Sunshine.
The last one, of course, up there is leasehold excise tax does apply. So, there's a leasehold excise tax in our state of a little over 12%. It's intended to mimic property taxes and is distributed the same way property taxes are distributed. And then, finally, and I guess it takes about, what, seven years or something, we would take over the garbage service up there. So, there would, there would be a period of time before we'd get that into our utility system. So, on the balance, I think we'd probably come out ahead with annexation even as is where is. But the bigger issue is knowing that the collective vision right now is for local control and redevelopment, even if for some reason this thing did go sideways, it still makes sense for us, the city, to have it in the city and to go after a pre-development process and a subarea plan or a comp plan for what the community wants to see up there. And then, that would bolster the port's efforts to market and develop it in the future.
Well, there's lots of ways that this could fail, but if we play it like it's going to fail, we can help make that happen. And that's what I want to avoid. Because, I mean, this is a case of apparently right time, right place. You couldn't have picked a better scenario in terms of the locality. We know that the family respects that area, and, and that's going to be, going to have a great effect on how it's treated. We're getting bipartisan support. I mean, I was in on that phone call when he was saying, "Yeah, here's 200-plus thousand dollars that you can apply for," and seemingly, we're going to get that money. I mean, when does that happen?
It's positive.
Yeah. He was like, "Oh, yeah, the threshold isn't going to be," just sounded like, "Scratch it on a, on a piece of paper and send it down, and, and we'll get you this money." That's what it sounded like to me. It sounded like a sure thing. I want to do whatever we can to make this happen.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to hire Janet Hansen at $50 an hour, not to exceed $25,000, to provide economic development coordinator services as requested by the city supervisor on a task order basis.
Second, can, okay, can we just call this professional service agreement?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, we got a motion by Councilmember Galbraith, second by Councilmember Sandstrom to approve the professional service agreement number 2015-PS-15. Any further discussion?
Well, I have one thing I want to say. Why I think this is important? Because we already know that our planning is going to be overtasked. Even if this didn't happen, we were doing that buildable lands analysis, and we know that that's going to stress that department without help.
Okay.
I mean, is, does that sound like a fair statement, John? We've already talked about the level of effort that's going to require. So, if we're going to do that and all this other stuff, I don't see how we could do it without some assistance.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Okay, passes. All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion also to, is it a motion for the partnership?
Yeah, to fund our partnership with an additional $25,000.
I think it's imperative that we, you know, are responsible and act quick like the project is progressing. So, I think I'd like to make a motion to fund $25,000 into this partnership.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilmember Sandstrom, second by Councilmember Wagner to fund the partnership of $25,000. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Okay.
So, we'll bring back, you know, with the next budget amendment, both these items will be included. And I just want to say one last thing, which is, you know, you have heard me be very negative about Skagit County government and a little bit towards the port in the past as well for property taxes that don't get spent here. This has been a 180-degree turn just since the beginning of the year, especially we've seen the, you know, the port's done a great job. It's been over a year now. They've spent a lot of money in our area, and, you know, they are truly trying to generate jobs. They've even gone so far as to say, "Look, if, if we're not the manager, we'll still play a ball and put port money into setting it up so DES or somebody else can manage the site to create the jobs." So, I want to acknowledge that. And likewise with the county. This may be the first time you'll hear me compliment the county so far on tape, but, you know, they've, they've done a great job. We are fully aligned on this project. They've pulled out the money. They've brought their top-level guys in to help on it. And, you know, it's, it's really very refreshing and fun to see the governments coming together to accomplish something very positive. So.
Benefits everybody.
Yeah. All right. So, you got the February 27th on your, on your calendars. The mayor will be issuing a special meeting notice once we get the agenda developed. But we want to make sure we're all there for that, that it'll be a very important meeting.
Patsy? Kevin?
Nothing.
Jermaine?
I had a question for Chief Tucker. I've actually heard a lot about feral cats. I've, I think I may have seen or heard a few on my street, but I meant to ask you-
Feral cats?
Yeah. I know. I mean, but, but I don't know-
In our neighborhood.
Do we have, or does a code enforcement officer take care of that? And then, does, is there a trap for someone to borrow?
Maybe we could get live traps.
Well, you can, you can buy a trap yourself if you're interested. We have a couple of traps, but we're, you know, we're real hesitant to go out and start trapping cats. I think cats are 60-some bucks a pop at the Humane Society.
So, Chief Wood gave the clearest answer. We don't do cats.
Yeah.
And we will loan out live traps to people.
Yeah, we loan those out, and then the people- I thought it was against a lot of trap animals.
Oh, heck no.
No, lake trap.
I think those are the, those are the not live trap, are the main traps. These are different. These are the have-a-heart traps. And Jermaine, I've got one if you need to borrow one.
I got one too. A feral cat or-
I have something else, too.
I have a feral wiener dog. No, I've got a live trap.
So, the Seidrowoli Boys and Girls Club wanted to thank Chief Tucker for helping with our fundraiser last Saturday for the kids. And they raised $16,000.
Wow.
And if you didn't notice his handsome face, he, so he shaved off, he had someone shave off his mustache, and then John Garmen, the director of the club, also had his beard shaved off to help raise the money. And so, this was a thank you from the kids that they worked on. And I was gonna, I'm gonna give this to you after, after the meeting.
Great, thank you. That was fun.
[applause]
It cost $1,200, by the way.
Right on. Thank you.
No, your hair was worth that much.
That's all I had.
[laughing]
I always get embarrassed this year.
And he, he worked auction quite a bit, too. I mean, he really hammed it up.
Thanks to the police department for letting us participate in the simulator today. That was-
It was all here for you guys.
That was awesome.
It was really fun. It was eye-opening.
Yeah.
How you have to make the split-second decision like that. So, thanks.
Good, thank you.
Keith?
Regionals for Wrestling High School are Saturday, and the boys' basketball team is really coming on in the end of the season. And Stacy, can I talk about your boy, or would you prefer not to?
[laughing]
Okay. Stacy and Cecil are my neighbors, and I've known their kids since they're, since they were little. And, well, Randy is grown up and joining the Marine Corps, so I'm really proud of him. It's just good to see somebody go off and do something great like that. So, congratulations.
Seidrowoli's playing Linden, and they're playing him on Friday night. Game starts at 7:00 in Linden. Keith didn't mention the place of the, where the regionals are, so you should probably do that, Keith.
Oh, here.
That's good. At what time?
Early. I, I think about 9 o'clock they'll start.
Starts at 9:00.
I should know that since I'm announcing.
You should know that.
You better be there.
That's awesome.
Rick?
No, sir.
Rick?
I just would like to get a, a Business Development Committee meeting. I've had a couple of requests for participation in some small project in the city, and also possibly looking at a tax holiday for targeted business. So, I'm really interested in setting that up.
Okay. I got one last quick update. That is Senate Bill 5887, our bill on the Northern State Project's just been scheduled for committee hearing Monday, 10:00 a.m. And House Bill 2035, the companion bill, was just moved forward by Hans Dunshee, hearing on Tuesday, February 17th at 3:30 p.m. So, just a quick follow-up. You asked how it's going. It's going.
Okay, we will be going into executive for RCW 4230-110.1. I, probably for about 10 minutes? 10 minutes? Okay.
And we'll be requesting action.
Okay. And we're out of here at 8:27.
Hans Dunshee is doing that, because he's in the house, isn't he?
Okay, we are back from executive at 8:47. You need a motion to adjourn? No action requested. Second by Lemley, second by Galbraith. All those in favor, stand. Thank you.